It's an amazing display of art and nature. Every Thursday morning, Kentama Zatlan offers a special for sculpture trail tour. So now you know, come visit us at Kentama Zatlan.
Hello, I'm Sochi Elmora with the City of McAllen. Welcome to your McAllen Minutes. If you missed the McAllen City Commission of May 9th, don't worry. Here's a brief recap of what was discussed. McAllen Mayor Pro Tem Joaquin JJ Samora called the McAllen City Commission meeting to order, and after the Pledge of Allegiance, District 3 Commissioner Omar Quintanilla gave the invocation. District 4 Commissioner Rudy Castillo was joined by McAllen Police Chief Victor Rodriguez and other McAllen Police Officers to help proclaim May 15 through the 21st as McAllen Police Officers Memorial Week. The McAllen Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens and recognizes its duty to safeguard life and property while protecting from violence and disorder. The City of McAllen commemorates law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. The McAllen City Commission encourages everyone to join in recognition and tribute to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Federico R. Sines, whose last day of service was March 26, 1933. Rosalynn Suarez, whose last day of service was May 19, 1981. Reynaldo V. Lopez, whose last day of service was July 10, 1993. Edelmiro Garza Jr., whose last day of service was July 11, 2020. Ismael Z. Chávez, whose last day of service was July 11, 2020. Thank you to all of our McAllen Police Officers. District 6 Commissioner Pepe Cabeza de Laca was joined by McAllen Planning Director Edgar García and his staff to proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month. Historic Preservation Month is a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling nation and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation, and can instill awareness of the local historically significant buildings and landmarks to the residents of McAllen and surrounding communities. McAllen continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through historic surveys, nomination of significant cultural resources to the State and National Register of Historic Places, adopting a historic preservation ordinance, and creating the Las Palmas Historic District. Congratulations to Edgar and his staff for their efforts to preserve the historical buildings of McAllen. District 1 Commissioner Tony Aguirre Jr. was joined by McAllen Parks and Recreation Director Denny Maline and his staff for a proclamation commemorating Older Texans Month. Older Texans are important members of our communities and their abilities, experience, wisdom, and resilience enrich our lives and help make our communities stronger. In order to ensure older Texans are able to fully participate in everything our great state has to offer, the Texas Health and Human Services Commission and the network of aging services providers partner to offer older Texans many resources to ensure they can continue to live their lives to the fullest. These services include independent living resources like healthy meals and home and community-based services, long-term care facility support such as safety and ombudsman services, mental and behavioral health services, and engagement opportunities so older Texans may work, volunteer, learn, teach, and stay connected while also staying healthy and safe. During May, an awareness campaign is conducted to highlight the vital contributions older Texans make every day to strengthen and support their communities and to celebrate their histories, talents, and experiences. Thank you to the McAllen Parks and Recreation Department for the continuous programs they provide at the three community centers throughout the year for the older McAllen Texans. Under the consent agenda, commissioners authorize removing uncollectible sanitation and drainage fee accounts from the general ledger for the fourth quarter of FY 2020-2021. The write-off is a combined $10,616.98 in uncollected sanitation and sales tax fees and $383.64 in uncollected drainage fees, which represents 0.20% and 0.12% respectively of total fees collected for each. Commissioners approved an amendment to the inter-local agreement between the City of McAllen and Hidalgo County for the mile seventeen and a half Russell Road widening limits. The project has been extended west to begin at Ruth Road and ending at Monmac Road. There is no fiscal impact to the City of McAllen. Commissioners authorized the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Office Bureau of Justice Assistance for funding under the FY 2022 invited to apply burn discretionary community project funding. The City of McAllen was invited to apply, and the solicitation was only open to recipients who received an appropriation to the Community Justice Program. Congressman Vicente Gonzalez expressed his support of the City of McAllen Forensics Equipment Project. This project will supply the McAllen Police Department with sophisticated equipment and software to forensically unlock digital services safeguarded from de-encryption. The grant proposal is in the amount of $250,000 with no local match required. Commissioners also authorized a grant submission to the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for funding under the fiscal year 2022 COPS Hiring Program. The COPS program is designed to advance public safety through community policing by addressing the full-time sworn officer needs of state, local, and tribal law enforcement agencies nationwide. The McAllen Police Department is eligible to apply for a grant to fund salaries and benefits of 15 police officers over a three-year period. The grant request is for $1,875,000 with a local share of $791,767 required. Commissioners authorized a grant submission to the Texas Department of Transportation for funding under the FY 2022 Operation Slow Down Grant Program. The City of McAllen is seeking funding to provide the McAllen Police Department with resources under the Step Orientation Slow Down Project. The purpose of the program is to increase effective enforcement and adjudication of traffic safety-related laws to reduce fatal and serious injury and to provide public information and education efforts during the enforcement period. The grant request is for $20,000 with a local match of $5,000. Commissioners authorized a grant submission to PetSafe under the fiscal year Bark for Your Park Grants Contest, which is about empowering communities to make their dog park dreams come true by increasing safe, off-leash areas for pet and pet parents to enjoy. The McAllen Parks and Recreation Department seeks funds for park improvements and maintenance of the McAllen Dog Park to have a positive impact on making life better for people, pets, and the whole community. The grant request is for $5,000 with no local match required. Under co-op purchases, commissioners authorized an award of contract to Leslie Swimming Pool Supplies through Byboard for the purchase and installation of a filtration system in the amount of $81,963.44. Commissioners also authorized an award of contract to Musco Sports Lighting LLC through Byboard for lighting materials and installation at Spring Fest Park in the amount of $500,000. Under bids and contracts, commissioners approved an award of contract from McAllen Marketing Co-op and Creative Consulting Services for a period of three years with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms to the highest-ranked firm Regal Studios DBA Polix Castor in the amount of $6,452.10. Commissioners also approved an award of contract to Go Underground LLC of Harlingen, Texas in the amount of $5,535,432 for the Daffodil Avenue Roadway Improvements Project from Taylor Road to Ware Road. The project's scope includes the construction of one mile of roadway widening of an urban four-lane section with adjacent sidewalks, a stormwater management system, water and sanitary sewer utilities for better traffic mobility and drainage. The total contract time is not to exceed 275 calendar days. Commissioners approved an award of contract to Texas Cordia Construction LLC of Eddingburg in the amount of $829,011.85 for the 23rd Street Intersection Improvements Project. The scope of work includes curb, sidewalk, and road paving to provide for left-turn bays for more efficient traffic movement. The total contract time is not to exceed 200 calendar days. Finally, commissioners approved an award of contract to the top three firms for various roadway projects including the Benson Road Widening, the Taylor Road Widening, and the 33rd Street Extension. Staff will negotiate scope and fees for those services. Under ordinances, commissioners authorized an ordinance for a budget
For Eliana Gómez, the Miracle Field at the McAllen Youth Baseball Complex is a wish come true. Her true miracle is her son Sammy. She says McAllen's new Miracle Field will allow Sammy to play ball just like every other kid.
Oh my gosh, we've been waiting for years to just give my son the opportunity and his peers to play ball and just have all the accommodations that they can have.
Gómez says when her son was born with health complications, she just wanted him to have the same chances as every child.
Sammy has a heart condition. He actually had open-heart surgery at four months. So just to see him strive and be healthy is great for us.
In 2016, Mayor Jim Darlene highlighted the Champions League baseball team at his State of the City. The league consists of children of special needs from the Capable Kids Foundation and others in the community.
Yeah, you know, I think the second State of the City, we talked about Everybody Matters, and we had the kids featured at that year, and so this is really exciting to see them.
Thanks to the City of McAllen and community partner HEB Tournament of Champions Grant that provided $150,000 in funding to support the full installation of Miracle Field focused specifically on accommodating children with disabilities. At the groundbreaking ceremony for this park, city leaders and children from Capable Kids finally broke ground and kicked off the construction. It will take several months before these kids will officially get to "play ball."
I am absolutely ecstatic. It's been several years in the making, and it's unbelievable to see it coming true. As soon as the surfacing's in the park within a few months, our kids are gonna be playing on it, and we can't wait to see their smiles.
Mayor Darlene says that every State of the City, we highlight people, community groups, or nonprofits that impact our community, highlighting that he knew he had to do something for them and others with special needs in our community.
You know, you got Camp University because a lot of these kids, they get attention when they're in school, but when school's over, they don't have anything. So I think Camp does a great job for the adults. Capable Kids is a great job for kids.
Camp, as it's known, is the Can Achieve Maximum Potential nonprofit organization that helps special education graduates stay physically active. Being the first and only inclusive baseball field in the Rio Grande Valley is a big deal to the special needs community. Dozens of children and their parents from the Capable Kids Foundation attended the groundbreaking for the new Miracle Field at the McAllen Youth Baseball Complex.
Oh, it means the world that City of McAllen saw our vision, jumped on board, and made it happen.
Melanie Watson says the specialized surface on the field will be convenient for wheelchairs and walkers. It may sound like movie magic, if you build it, they will come, but it will truly be a Miracle Field for the children, the parents, and the community to play ball. For the City of McAllen, I'm Roy Cantu.
Mi familia y yo pensábamos en qué forma de hacer horas de servicio de la comunidad sin ponernos en peligro o en peligro. Y lo que pensamos fue que era una idea muy buena.
Esto es genial, quiero decir, para que la gente venga, especialmente para honrarnos, para agradecernos por lo que estamos haciendo ahora mismo en medio de este problema del coronavirus. Es fantástico. Sé que todos tienen un poco de miedo de salir y volver a la publicidad y eso para ellos hacer esto por nosotros fue extra especial.
Gracias, señor alcalde. Sé un lugar donde la seguridad es un piloto central que apoya el desarrollo de la ciudad. Como McAllen continúa prosperando, no solo nos enfocamos en el crecimiento económico, sino también implementando nuevas estrategias de seguridad pública para el desarrollo de la comunidad. De acuerdo con el Departamento de Seguridad Pública de Texas, la ciudad de McAllen está en el primer lugar en crímenes violentos en Texas. Además, McAllen se aprecia por tener el ratio de crímenes más bajo en 37 años, marcando nuestro 12 años consecutivos con un desplazamiento de crímenes. Hay innumerables formas de analizar los datos de crímenes, pero no importa cómo hagas, el resultado es el mismo. McAllen es una de las ciudades más seguras de los Estados Unidos. Hay muchos esfuerzos que implementamos como líderes de la ciudad para asegurar que nuestra comunidad esté segura. Comenzamos garantizando que los trabajadores duraderos y dedicados de la policía de McAllen, que ponen sus vidas en riesgo todos los días, están correctamente compensados y tienen el equipo más actualizado y entrenado. Este año, la ciudad de McAllen firmó acuerdos colectivos multiaños entre la policía de McAllen y las uniones de asalto, asegurando que los mejores respondientes de primera instancia permanezcan en McAllen. A medida que nuestra ciudad crece, así son los servicios que proporcionamos. Justamente recientemente, la ciudad administró un examen de servicio civil para la próxima clase de oficiales policiales de McAllen. Nuestra fuerza policial de 300 oficiales prometidos proporciona alrededor de 2.1 oficiales de tiempo completo por 1,000 residentes, mejor que la media nacional. Porque nada es más importante que la seguridad y el bienestar de nuestros residentes y visitantes, el Departamento de Policía de McAllen colabora con agencias de fiscalía local, estatal y federal, compartiendo experiencia, inteligencia y recursos, trabajando juntos para maximizar la fuerza que proporciona toda la presencia de la fiscalía. Y cuando hablamos de los que sirven para proteger, también hablamos de la valentía de McAllen, el Departamento de Asalto de McAllen. Los bomberos de asalto de McAllen están entrenados y preparados para el próximo gran incidente. De hecho, para asegurar que nuestros bomberos estén siempre listos, pronto comenzaremos la construcción de nuestra propia, nueva y de primera clase, instalación de entrenamiento de asalto. Este proyecto hará que la ciudad de McAllen y el Departamento de Asalto de McAllen sean destino para entrenamiento básico, avanzado y altamente especializado de servicio de asalto a nivel local, regional, estatal e incluso internacional. La seguridad estos días significa más que solo la protección policial y de asalto. También significa seguridad de los amenazos que no pueden verse, pero continúan afectándonos a todos. Desde 2020, la ciudad de McAllen, como el resto del mundo, ha luchado contra la pandemia COVID-19. El año pasado, en colaboración con el condado de Hidalgo y la ISD de McAllen, organizamos varios programas de vacunación de COVID-19. De hecho, recientemente organizamos otra tasa de clínica y continuaremos aportando clínicas de vacuna futura durante todo lo que necesitemos para ayudarnos a todos a estar seguros y saludables. Sé un lugar donde la seguridad y la seguridad no son solo palabras, sino verdaderamente una forma de vida.
¿Sabía usted que también puede utilizar McAllen 311 desde el sitio web McAllen.net? Es muy fácil, solo seleccione McAllen 311 desde la página principal. Se encuentra en la esquina derecha superior. Luego solo llega a la información solicitada. A continuación, un ejemplo de cómo reportar reparación de calle con baches. Primero iniciamos por seleccionar el tipo de solicitud, en este caso serían baches, hotels en inglés. Después de seleccionar hotels, especifiquen el mapa donde está el problema. La tercera opción brinda una oportunidad de dar más detalles sobre la solicitud. Introduzca la información adicional necesaria y escriba una breve descripción de dónde está ubicado el bache. La siguiente opción le da una oportunidad de adjuntar una foto o video. Tenga en cuenta que este será el único momento en el que podrá adjuntar fotografías o videos a la solicitud. Por último, haga clic en enviar. Recibirá una confirmación de que se ha enviado la solicitud. Recuerde, también puede enviar su solicitud directamente a través de la aplicación móvil McAllen 311, descargando la aplicación del Google Play Store para Android o de App Store para iOS. McAllen 311, su conexión a la ciudad de McAllen.
Y ahora, desde la sala de reunión de la Comisión de Ciudad de McAllen de McAllen.
Buenas noches a todos, bienvenidos a la reunión de la Comisión de Ciudad de McAllen de esta noche. Y estamos un poco tarde, pero estamos preparados. De todos modos, comenzamos con el pleno de adoración y la invitación de el comisionado Tony Aguirre.
Yo plego el adoración en el nombre de los Estados Unidos de América, un republico por el cual se está, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia por lo.
Levantemos nuestras cabezas. Señor, te agradecemos por otro gran acto. Agradecemos que todos los días que pasamos aquí en la tierra es un día en el que nos preparamos para el día que nos llama. Señor, te pedimos que cuides de nuestra gran ciudad, nuestra gran nación y nuestro gran mundo en tiempos en los que todos tienen visiones y expresiones, que todos respetamos y amamos. Te pedimos que cuides de aquellos que están en necesidad. Te amamos. En tu trabajo, le rezamos, Amén.
Amén. Ahora tenemos el Proyecto de Parques y Recreación Nacional, el comisionado Castillo.
Estado de Texas, condado de Hidalgo, ciudad de McAllen. Mientras que desde 1985, América ha celebrado julio como parque oficial de los naciones y recreación. Y mientras que el Parque y Recreación es una gran oportunidad para demostrar los valiosos beneficios de los parques y recreaciones locales. Y mientras que los parques y recreación locales celebrarán todas las formas en las que ayudan a hacer sus comunidades grandes a través de conversación, salud y bienestar y equidad social. No solo beautizan los barrios, sino también promueven las oportunidades para un pueblo más saludable, más inteligente, más efectivo, más resiliente. Y mientras que la Comisión de Ciudad de McAllen anima a los ciudadanos a visitar todos los 89 parques de McAllen y cualquier instalación de recreación, piscinas, centros y campos deportivos. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, el rey Castillo, Comisionado de la Ciudad de McAllen, Texas, por autoridad ritualizada en mí y a cargo del alcalde y de la Comisión de Ciudad, proclamo el mes de julio de 2022 como Parque y Recreación Nacional.
Gracias, comisionado, y gracias, comisionado y alcalde, jefe de la ciudad. Gracias por su apoyo continuo para que el Departamento de Parques y Recreación haga lo que amamos hacer, que es mejorar la calidad de vida para todos nuestros residentes aquí en la ciudad de McAllen. Hoy, el Parque y Recreación de la Ciudad de McAllen celebra los muchos beneficios de salud de actividades de recreación outdoor en honor de Parque y Recreación Nacional. Parque y Recreación Nacional destaca el papel importante que juegan los parques y recreaciones locales en mantener nuestra comunidad fuerte y saludable. La entire equipo de parques y recreación, los que están detrás de mí, hay más que falta, invita a que se explore el impacto que los parques y recreación pueden tener en ustedes al salir a nuestros parques, nuestras tránsitos, nuestras piscinas, espacio abierto, centro de naturaleza y otros espacios públicos durante el mes de julio, que se proclama como Parque y Recreación Nacional. Con eso, quiero agradecer, tomar el tiempo para reconocer al equipo que está aquí a mi lado esta noche. Sin ellos, nada de esto podría haber ocurrido. Estoy tan orgulloso de este equipo, como ponen el tiempo y el esfuerzo en asegurarnos de que nuestra comunidad tenga una experiencia de primera clase en nuestros programas, eventos y parques. Gracias.
Item número uno, audiencias públicas.
Alcalde, comisionados, buenas noches. Esta noche tenemos tres temas listados bajo rutina. Son todos permisos de uso condicionado. Como siempre, vienen con una recomendación favorable de la Comisión de Zoning Plan y no han recibido ninguna oposición. Pueden ser aprobados en un motion o discutidos separadamente como desean. Son un permiso de uso condicionado por un año para una tienda de licor en 301 North Ware, suite B. Un permiso de renovación de uso condicionado por un año para una barra en 400 Alana, suite H1. Y un permiso de uso condicionado para la vida de uso para una casa de invitados en 4604 Estancia Parkway.
¿Hay alguien en contra de estos temas?
No se aprobó.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries.
El siguiente tema es un permiso de uso condicionado para una barra por un año en 1116 Piccon. Esta propiedad está ubicada en el lado norte de Piccon, entre 11th y 11.5. Es zona C3, zona de zonaje C3 en todas las direcciones y usos circundantes incluyen plazas comerciales y algunas casas. Esta será la primera vez que este aplicante solicita una CUP en este lugar. La propuesta específicamente es operar una barra desde un edificio de 4,200 metros cuadrados existente. El tema fue presentado en la reunión de la Comisión de Zoning Plan de junio 21. No hubo oposición y fue desaprobado con una recomendación favorable.
¿Alguien en contra de este tema?
No se aprobó.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries.
Este próximo tema está tabulado y estamos recomendando que permanezca tabulado.
Motion a tabular.
Segundo.
Todos en favor. En contra, motion carries, tema número tres.
Este es un permiso de uso condicionado por un año para un centro de eventos en 4101 Expressway 83. Esta propiedad está ubicada en el lado norte de Cobath, aproximadamente 860 pies de este a la izquierda de Benson. Es zona C3 con zona de zonaje C3 a la norte, a la izquierda y a la izquierda, y R1 a la sur. Usos circundantes incluyen restaurantes, gimnasios y casas de familia. El aplicante propone dirigir un centro de eventos desde un futuro edificio de 14,426 metros cuadrados con horas propuestas de domingo a sábado, 8:00 a.m. hasta 2:00 a.m., pero obviamente es por alquiler. Y el tema fue presentado en la reunión de la Comisión de Zoning Plan de junio 21. No hubo oposición y fue desaprobado con una recomendación favorable.
¿Alguien en contra de este tema?
¿Se aprobó?
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries. Vamos a ver, tenemos una agenda de consentimiento, temas 1, 2, 3, 4, ¿Necesitamos votar algo? Si no, tenemos motion a aprobar los temas 1, 2, 3, 4. Segundo.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries. Tema número tres, contratos.
3A es un contrato de trabajo para la Grupación de Bons 2018, C, mejoras de drenaje.
¿Necesitamos una presentación? Ya están listos.
Este fue...
Sí, adelante.
Buenas noches, alcalde, comisionado y jefes de la ciudad. Los dos proyectos antes de usted son dos de nuestros proyectos de mejora de drenaje financiados bajo los 2018. El proyecto Martin Avenue y Comacia. Recibimos un candidato recientemente y nos gustaría avanzar con la construcción y recomendamos un contrato a los contratistas de RBM de Ed Couch, Texas. El proyecto de bypasso de agua potable de Martin Avenue tiene una cantidad de 1,0125,392.90 con un tiempo de calendario de 120 días. En el proyecto de mejora de drenaje de la Avenida Comacia tiene una cantidad de 697,334.6 con un tiempo calendario de 90 días. Vamos a abrirlo para cualquier pregunta.
¿Cualquier pregunta? ¿Tengo motion a aprobar?
Sí.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries, tema B.
B es consideración de aprobación para procurar reemplazos de unidades de acero en Lark y Palmview.
Comisionados, sí, estamos solicitando aprobación para procurar reemplazos de unidades de acero en ambos centros de community de Lark y Palmview.
Aquí, no están haciendo bien.
No están haciendo bien, señor.
Tengo motion a aprobar.
Motion a aprobar. Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries.
Gracias.
Tema cuatro, A.
A, 4A es proporcionar un amendamiento de presupuesto para el fondo American Rescue.
Pensé que era Ivette, pero ella no está aquí, así que déjame ver lo que tenemos. Déjame ir a él, alcalde.
¿Qué es esto?
Así que estamos amendando el presupuesto para fondos que recibimos a través del plan de rescate. Y pueden ver los números en su paquete. Hay transferencias operativas en para el American Rescue Plan y fuera a proyectos de infraestructura. Esas son solo cantidades que han sido elegibles a través del departamento de finanzas. Estamos recomendando aprobación.
¿Cualquier pregunta?
Sí.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries.
B es proporcionar un amendamiento de presupuesto para el plan de acción anual de la CDBG para aumentar el alcance del Departamento de Asalto de McAllen.
Buenas noches, alcalde, miembros de la Comisión de Ciudad. Este tema es solo para amendar nuestro plan de acción anual de la CDBG de 2017 solo para aumentar el alcance de trabajo para este Departamento de Asalto de McAllen. Solo para incluir el camión de lavado. En este momento lo tenemos para la compra de SCBA y radios. Así que esto es solo para incluir la compra del camión de lavado.
¿Cualquier pregunta?
Se aprobó.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries. Tema C.
El siguiente tema es un amendamiento de presupuesto, alcalde y comisionados, relacionado con el tema que acaba de aprobar para el centro de community.
¿Tengo motion a aprobar?
Aprobado.
Segundo.
Todos en favor.
Varios.
En contra, motion carries. Tema número cinco.
5A es consideración de variante de solicitud para suspender los requerimientos de pavimento, drenaje y bordes para la subdivisión de Silver Valley.
Sí, lo estamos presentando antes de usted. La subvía es una subdivisión de una familia de dos hogares residencial along the Taylor Road corridor. Una escala de mejora pública fue depositada en la cantidad de 48,168 como parte del proceso de subdivisión. El segmento de Taylor Road ha sido identificado para mejoras financiado bajo la Organización Metropolitana de Planos del condado de Hidalgo, TECSTAT. De tal manera que los desarrolladores solicitan variante sobre las escasas reales para eso. Ahora, con las opciones, les voy a explicar tres de ellas. Podemos aprobar, desaprobar y continuar presentando estas en caso a caso. Aprobar la solicitud y requerir escasas futuras de este segmento de la carretera o desaprobar la solicitud y negar o no requerir escasas para ese segmento de la carretera. Esencialmente, un segmento de la Expressway a Daffodil.
¿Cualquier pregunta?
Creo que, así que en este, estaba mirando, es de familia, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Si no habían pasado el proceso de subdivisión, ¿qué pasaría si habían sido pagados por parte de...? Hubieran obtenido una oferta, ¿no?, por parte de los 10 pies al menos.
Bueno, este tema está estrictamente con las mejoras públicas. La salida de la vía ha sido dedicada. Es estrictamente para el pavimento, drenaje y escasas de bordes.
Okay.
¿Dijo que la salida de la vía fue qué?
Fue dedicada, sí, como parte de...
¿Fue dedicada?
Sí.
En lugar de...
Como parte del proceso de subdivisión, sí.
Entonces, habían abandonado un pedazo, supongo.
¿Habían abandonado?
They abandoned it?
Or, I guess, they had abandoned it?
Yeah, dedicating the, the right-of-way.
At minimum, what? Credit for that abandonment, no? I mean, wouldn't it be?
No, I mean, the subdivision, I mean, state statutes allows municipalities to take the right-of-way when you subdivide. That's the only way you, you're able to, to take the property. Now, if they're not subdividing and you're going to make an improvement, then we'll, you know, we'll make an offer based on the appraisal. But when you're subdividing, that's required, that you dedicate that kind of right-of-way.
Is the applicant around here? I mean, so they can explain a little bit about. Okay, Mayor?
Mayor, Council, good evening. This is Hector Moreno. I'm with M2 Engineer. I was the project engineer. He's Roberto Garza, the owner. We're respectfully requesting a variance due to, after several meetings with staff, which recommended us to, I guess, place even a plat note on the, on the plat to possibly apply for a variance due to there's already being funded for the road widening. So, if we're putting this money for escrow for future widening, but the City of McAllen, City of Mission already has the funding for it, so that's the reason why we're asking for the, for the variance, for the escrows.
And the funding was through where?
So, we're expanding Taylor Road and, and it is a co-op between the City, Mission, County, and TxDOT. But it is city funds that we're paying, so I'm not sure that that's relevant, whether they, whether that's...
And that's what I'm trying to get at. Because if it's our funds, that's the purpose of...
That's the purpose of an escrow.
Of the escrow. And what are the variances?
It's, it's just a variance, I, I guess, to waive that escrow amount that we paid for the, for the street widening of, and infrastructure of, along the front edge of Taylor.
Paving, drainage, and sidewalks?
Yes.
But the collective dollars between the funding sources is not in addition to their dollars? In other words, is it kind of the same dollar for the same thing? If TxDOT is paying for it, I don't see why the developer, why he should pay for it.
Well, TxDOT is paying for some of the funding. This is north of Mile 2, correct?
This is just north of 495 Pecan.
This is just north of 495.
Yeah, so it would be in the, in the phase two of the, of the project.
Right. So, yes, there is funding from TxDOT, Mission, and McAllen. So, that, so that would, by, by collecting an escrow, you reduce the dollars necessary from the City of McAllen.
Well, that's what we always do, though. Collect the escrow.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a live project that's about to go to construction probably in the next year or so.
I guess it was subdivided, it was escrow, now they want the money back.
Right.
Well, I guess they knew when they were subdividing that the improvements were going to come. I don't know if it was a recommendation from staff, why would they have put, to ask for a variance on the plat? Almost as if they kind of preempted for them to expect that, that's, that's the...
Yes, as part of the plotting process, one of the engineering comments was to, to place a plat note to, for the developer to apply for a variance for the, for those escrow amounts.
That request didn't come from the city, though.
The only concern I have is that if we do do that, then we're having the rest of the taxpayers.
Twenty-one.
Fund for, on this.
Well, express whatever you're saying, because y'all are communicating, so what, what, what are y'all communicating and what, where are we?
Oh, they're showing where the note is on the plat. That's what they were showing.
Oh.
The recorded plat.
I guess if we, we utilize the escrows for the improvements, I think their belief is that it's already paid by TxDOT and by...
But it's not.
But it's not.
It's, part of it is...
Yeah, I mean, we, we, I don't remember the number, but I know it's seven figures. It's a million and some that we paid as our part.
To clarify that, Mayor, members of the Commission, it was 1.3 million on the Phase 3 for just the, the design development. Out of the UTP for the CAT 7 funding, we were on the mark for about $850,000. That's with that, that current funding stream in there, with the city being responsible for, of course, overages if we go beyond that, so. There has been a substantial investment made into that already.
Yeah, it, there's obviously, it costs money, a lot of money. But man, $48,000 for two, two lots, you know, abutting Taylor Road just seems very, very expensive.
And that was probably, probably, when, when was this escrow done?
The escrow's been...
Okay, so it'll be pretty much the cost for right now, so it's not... I don't know. My concern is just having other people pay for somebody else's development. That is, that is the issue. What do you all think?
Well, there's, there's many parcels, right, along this, there's, there's a tremendous... So, whoever has subdivided, whoever subdivides in the future, will they have to pay the, the, this amount of money? This calculation?
Yes, it's based off of linear feet, but yes.
And, and so if somebody, you know, north or south of, of this, will they, they'll have to pay that linear foot, this calculation?
They're not unsubdivided at this moment, yes.
Yeah, if they're not subdivided, the project will come through and pay...
Right.
Pay them market value, though, for what they need.
Well, that's the thing, yeah. I mean, right now, they're being paid their right-of-way market value. But now that it's subdivided, they, they don't get that.
Yes, exactly.
They don't, right?
They don't.
They don't. So, they missed it by two months.
Now, it's not the same amount they probably would have gotten.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Say something on that timeline, though, but...
Okay.
So, the developer paid the escrows because he was on a time crunch for financing, right? So, so there was, it, it wasn't the city trying to push him or anything else. He made the decision of, let me just pay upfront and I'll worry about whatever happens later, because I need to, to record. So, I, I just, that timeline, I want to make sure it's there.
Anything else? What other wishes, Commissioner?
It doesn't have to be all or nothing, you know? I mean, y'all can decide that, too.
Yeah, but...
Yes.
My question is this. Hypothetically, if this, if Taylor Road had already been, been built back-to-back full width, would this developer have been assessed the escrow?
Yes, you're allowed by state law to do that, yes.
Recoup it, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Okay, thank you.
What was the question?
If he had already, if, if Taylor Road had already been constructed back-to-back and they were subdividing now, that's still owed.
Recoup it.
You can still recoup it. The city can recoup that amount of money.
The 48,000?
Yep.
And the 48,000 is calculated just on their side or...
On their side, yeah, just for the front, strictly on the, the paving, drainage, and sidewalks, you know, aside from the right-of-way. The right-of-way was dedicated, so, just to clarify that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove the marriage request as requested by the...
Do I have, do I have a second?
Is there discussion?
You need to have a second before discussion.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Now, discussion? Well, just to go ahead and table and get more information and see how we...
I think there's middle ground. I think it's just the timing of the project, right? So, they could have gotten a small sum if they weren't, if they hadn't subdivided, that they would have had in their pocket, and then when they subdivided, they would have, I guess, had to come in probably a smaller escrow. I'm not sure, maybe the same?
It'd be the same.
It'd be the same, but they would have, it would have been offset by what they would have gotten by the purchase of the right-of-way.
Correct.
So, I don't know if we have a way of calculating the purchase by the right-of-way and deducting that from the escrow and...
We'll make it easy, split it. No, I think there's a... I think there is a calculation of the...
No, I mean, of course, area, I just don't know what it would, what it would be.
Or we could split it, but then again, I don't, I don't want to set a precedent.
See, but we also don't want to set a precedent and give away money that we've already collected that should have been collected in the first place.
No, and I think, I think we're fairly consistent. I think we've had some case-by-case scenarios where we have, I can think of one or two.
I think, by case scenarios, they've been in the ETJ or in the far northern reaches of our city limits, and Taylor Road, I mean, this area is right-of-abutting, a, a, very near a commercial district for remission. I mean, this is pretty well-developed. This is one of the last few pockets of development in that area, on 495 and Taylor.
Yes, but the, they were, they were paying landowners for the right-of-way acquisitions. So, I think whatever that right-of-way acquisition money, which is much less than 48,000, okay? I think that, maybe that amount should, should, should be reimbursed, because they would have, they would have gotten that money. And right now, they're not going to.
Yeah.
And it's much less than 48,000, I will tell you, but I don't have that...
Do you have any idea? Well, they're all different. I mean, every parcel's going to be different based on retainers and all that, but more or less, do you recall what we're paying on a per-square-foot basis along Taylor?
Not, well, actually, it would be a linear foot cost, not off the top of my head.
No, no, I mean, for right-of-way, we're paying...
Oh, for, oh, for right-of-way.
For right-of-way, we're paying on a per-square-foot basis. We can, we can either look at that, and if you want to take that action, and we take an average and subtract it from the total, or bring it back, we can do that.
I would be okay with just allowing y'all to take the average, deducting that, and they pay the difference?
We can do that.
All right. I would agree, because of the two-month timing scenario.
Yeah. But it would be the same. That's what I'm saying, it would be the same.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay, so what the motion is...
That they would have been able to sell.
It would have been the way they would have ended, huh?
What's a... So, we have a motion to what?
The motion is to allow city management or engineering to calculate an average of what we're paying for the frontage, credit that to the amount owed, and return that amount, basically, return that amount.
Second.
Out of the escrow.
Okay, Counselor, is that good enough? Because it's a...
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye against? Motion carries. Managers report.
We've got the presentation of year-to-date tax collection.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Commission.
Good evening.
I have a short and simple report. This year, we began our beginning balance with an amount of $53,36,573. We've had adjustments from the Appraiser District, and that brought our adjusted levy to $54,571,282.08. We have collected year-to-date $52,611,523.62, which brings our year-to-date collection rate to 96.41, which is a slight increase from last year's 95.62%. Towards the middle of the report, you'll see a breakdown by property type. It basically just explains how much we've collected in real estate, which is 96.43%. In personal property, 96.52%. For mobile homes, we've collected 80.59%. And in minerals, we've collected 98.28%. And towards at the bottom, you'll see additional collection fees such as late rendition penalties in the amount of $58,502.97, penalty and interest in the amount of $546,349.04, attorney fees in the amount of $196,660.59, tax certificates, $740,000, return checks, $300,000, rollback taxes, $38,530.41, and for the Public Improvement District for the Lagos that we do collect for, that is an amount of $262,431.53. That concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions?
On rollback?
Yes.
Do we have any outstanding balances?
We do have, I don't have the exact amount, but it's not more than like $25,000.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, it's not like a huge amount.
And I don't know how much we accrued of that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Delinquent tax report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Viva Loos. Commissioners, Kelly Salzada present your third quarter fiscal year report for the fiscal city report for the period of February 1st through May 31st, 2022. Our delinquent tax program for the City of McAllen always focuses on two basic premises. First is to collect from the individual taxpayer first, and second, use tool of litigation only is a final option to collect. You'll see detailed in our report, our demand mailing efforts. We mailed on three separate occasions, mailing over 4,400 statements to delinquent taxpayers in this area. You also see our personal contact outreach summarized with phone calls, payment agreements, and onsite visits. Our litigation is also summarized. We filed 59 lawsuits this third quarter, and we have 408 lawsuits currently pending, representing over $1 million owed in base penalty and interest. You'll see on the third page our collection comparison highlights for the third quarter. Last year in the third quarter, we experienced a extreme high in surge in collections for the city. You'll notice this third quarter, we've exceeded the norm in historical collections in the third quarter, with collections over $398,000 in base and over $157,000 in penalty and interest collected, for total collections this third quarter of over $556,000 for the City of McAllen. Looking forward to the fourth quarter, we'll continue our diligent collection efforts, making sure to exhibit compassion towards delinquent taxpayers, but also meeting your budgetary needs. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Immigration.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, a short report today. Our average drop-offs remain about 280 per day. Our COVID positivity rate at Onze Duus Park remains between 5 and 10%. The occupancy at the park is a little less than 100 with the capacity still of 1,600. And the only real change, other than previous reports, is obviously Governor Abbott issued Executive Order GA41 last week. That order authorizes DPS and the Texas National Guard to return immigrants who have violated certain federal laws, allows them to be transported back to ports of entry. That is the sum total of the information that we have currently on that item. We're still waiting for some more clarification from the Governor's office, but I don't have the ability to tell you the impact we may expect from that here in our region at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Future agenda items. Anybody? I have not, then we'll reach us to executive session.
I have not, then we'll reach us to executive session.
We're back from executive session. Council, what do we have?
Okay, Mayor, with respect to item 7A1, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described in executive session.
I make the motion.
And then Mayor, with respect to item 7A2, I again recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described Mayor, with respect to item 7B, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion that a plaque be installed at the Public Safety Building in honor of the first Hispanic police chief, Longoria of the city of McAllen.
I hear motion to approve.
Mayor, with respect to item 7C, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion to authorize the city attorney and city manager to negotiate contracts with the various vendors described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7E, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city attorney and city manager to obtain an appraisal of the real property described in executive session and then listing that property for sale. Lastly, Mayor, with respect to item 7E, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city manager and city attorney to work with those third parties and to execute such agreements necessary and appropriate with respect to the convention center festival grounds described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7D, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city attorney and city manager to obtain an appraisal of the real property described in executive session and then listing that property for sale. Mayor, with respect to item 7E, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city attorney and city manager to obtain an appraisal of the real property described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7F, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7G, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7H, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7I, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to offer the economic development incentives described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7J, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion that a plaque be installed at the Public Safety Building in honor of the first Hispanic police chief, Longoria of the city of McAllen.
I hear motion to approve.
Mayor, with respect to item 7C, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion to authorize the city attorney and city manager to negotiate contracts with the various vendors described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7D, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to authorize the city attorney and city manager to negotiate contracts with the various vendors described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7E, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city manager and city attorney to work with those third parties and to execute such agreements necessary and appropriate with respect to the convention center festival grounds described in executive session. Mayor, with respect to item 7F, I recommend that the City Commission consider approving a motion to authorize the city attorney and city manager to negotiate contracts with the various vendors described in executive session. Lastly, Mayor, with respect to item 7E, I recommend that the City Commission consider a motion authorizing the city manager and city attorney to work with those third parties